Good evening. I'm Catherine Harrington, the Chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Welcome this evening to the Budget Committees for Washington County Service District for Lighting Number One, North Bethany County Service District for Roads, Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and the Urban Road Maintenance District. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Why don't we go through welcome and introductions as facilitated by our county administrator? And we do have a posted agenda as well. And we will have time certain later for public questions. So...
Okay. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We just met a few weeks ago. So here we are for the formal process, public hearing, and hopefully approval of the budgets this evening. Tonight, we wanted to start out again with introductions. I'm Bob Davis, County Administrator here for Washington County.
Sheila Jambroni. Sheila Jambroni, I work for Land Use and Transportation. I'm their administrative manager.
I'm Stephen Roberts. I'm the Assistant Director of Land Use and Transportation.
To Sir Biaudon, a member of the North Bethany County Service District.
Jerry Willey, County Commissioner, District Four.
Sarah Beechey, Committee Member of the North Bethany County Service District for Roads. Catherine Harrington, Chair.
Pam Trees, County Commissioner, District Two.
Dan Reed, Lay Member.
Dick Scowton on the Washington County Board of Commissioners, representing the Lower Beaverton-Cooper Mountain area.
Well, thank you, and thank everybody for being here tonight. I think we'll jump right in and have the district budget overview by Stephen Roberts.
Thank you. So we've got just a few slides to run through tonight. And I did want to mention that at our last meeting, when we did our initial presentation on May 14th, there were a few questions that came up from the committee. So we can run through some of those now, if you'd like, or we can hold those until after we run through the presentation. Okay. We'll do that. All right. Let's see. We've done that. So yeah, we'll do the overview questions from the committee on the public, and then you'll consider budget approval. So quickly, just to run back through some history. So the North Bethany County Service District was part of the North Bethany Transportation Funding Strategy that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners back in 2011. It was adopted as something of a... So its mission is to provide partial funding for road construction. The roads were identified as a result of a community planning process. And as I mentioned, the board adopted the funding strategy in 2011. It included multiple funding sources that are intended to help build out needed road infrastructure in the North Bethany community planning area over time. The funding sources include a specific transportation system development charge, or SDC, for the North Bethany area. The TDT, which is Transportation Development Tax, that's a countywide tax on new development, essentially functions like a system development charge. MSTIP is the county's major streets transportation improvement program. So there was a commitment to allocate $10 million in MSTIP funds to a larger bundle of projects in the North Bethany area. And then finally, what we call trust and agency. Those are typically fees paid by developers in lieu of being able to construct a particular improvement. So those monies are held by the county and then are used at a future date to construct eligible improvements. There were 14 total road projects that were identified in the initial funding strategy. 12 of those were eligible for public funding. Two were to be constructed completely by developers. And they were placed on the list so that they were made eligible for credits against system development charges within North Bethany. So the transportation funding strategy assumed a 20-plus-year build-out. At the time that we were planning for North Bethany, we were in the recession, and I think everyone assumed 20 years was a realistic timeframe. We've been experiencing development occurring much more rapidly than that. And so the revenues have been accruing over time, or have been accruing more quickly than anticipated. But the expectation was that, over that roughly 20-year build-out period, that there would be adequate funding to construct the slate of projects that were identified in the initial funding strategy. So we've been working with a subcommittee of this group to try to help advise us, not just specifically to the North Bethany County Service District for Roads, but also oversight and planning of projects, allocation of funds, an allocation of... Oh, that's better. Allocation of funds. All right. Okay. So we've been working with, again, a subcommittee of this group, which includes the five citizen members and typically two commissioners, to try to help look forward as to how revenues are coming in, how we want to think about allocating those revenues in the upcoming budget year. So we met with that subcommittee back in November, and we looked at our year-end estimates for the current fiscal year, 1819, and then anticipated revenues for 1920, and then what we thought would make sense in terms of how to allocate that anticipated funding in this current, in this upcoming 1920 budget year. So the staff recommendation to the subcommittee at that time was to adopt a pay-as-you-go approach. We want to be fairly conservative. Maybe a little bit less so right now, but at the time, there was concern about a potential housing market slowdown. We were hearing from builders that, and the trends were that housing starts were down and demand was down. So we wanted to estimate, you know, we want to be very conservative in terms of actual revenues that will come into the program. We have a couple of large credit-eligible improvements that we anticipate developers are going to construct in the next year or two. And so we wanted to sort of see what the impact of those projects would be relative to our overall project needs and generally then the cash flow. And then we talked about continuing to evaluate the need for a couple of what we had called gap projects. There are developments, are completing significant portions of roadways, but there are a couple of potential gaps that we've identified. So we're going to continue to monitor the need for potentially the county to step in and fund and construct those gap improvements. And with a limited amount of unallocated funding in the budget, we recommended that the subcommittee consider funding the design of a new improvement to Springville Road between the PCC campus and Joss Avenue. And then that would set it up for potential construction either in fiscal year 2021 or in 2122, depending on how revenues do come in over time. So with that, I'm going to ask Sheila to talk a little bit about the actual budget numbers.
Okay. As laid before you, we have kind of how the budget is laid out. We talked last November, and we thought we would have about $1 million beginning of July 1. And our estimates were pretty spot-on. We have 1.1 million is our beginning fund balance. But you'll see taxes and interest, that includes about $602,000 in the taxes themselves and about $28,000 in interest earnings. And then the additional money revenues coming in are transfers in from North Bethany SDC Fund and are transfers from the TDT Fund. The little pie chart that you see up there is just the expenditures. So as you can see, most of that is materials and supplies. We budgeted all, most of our appropriations and our professional services for the actual delivery of our projects. So with that, kind of the breakdown, if you will, we're estimating approximately 7.5 million of that, as I said, was the SDC Fund. So we've got 6.75 million is a project cost for Springville Road, Kaiser to Joss. 900,000 is for the Springville Phase Four PCC to Joss. Those are the two projects in this fund this year, as well as, as I said, we had about 7.5 and 3.5 from the various other funds. That still leaves us a little bit of extra money. And our best guess, at the end of June 30th, 2020, revenues come in as planned, we should have about 4.9 million in unobligated monies. The rest of the charges, there's some money in there for staff charges to the project, some indirect costs, some right-of-way purchase expenses. And then the transfer to other funds, that's a transfer to the road fund, and that is basically to pay for the Office of the Director Administrative Services staffing. And as I said, the 4.9 million is our best guess right now. We're estimating all of those revenues, assuming the project comes in at that 6.75 million, assuming that the design work is only 900,000. We should have approximately that 4.9 million, in which we would plan to meet with a budget committee or the subcommittee, as Stephen said, probably again in November, to talk further about that. And that's all I had from the budget. If you had any questions?
Yes. I just, I'm looking at the budget detail here, and it shows that we're going to have an ending fund balance of zero. So we're presuming that we were going to have some left over because, but this is, the 4.9 is the best guess.
Correct.
But we don't put that in there. So in next year, will I see a beginning? If that were to occur, I'd see a beginning fund balance of 4.9 million?
Correct. We've budgeted this very similar to our capital budgets, where we try to budget all of, all of the money that we might have available. It allows for some flexibility. So should the subcommittee decide that they wanted to advance a project, our appropriations are already budgeted.
Right. Okay. Good idea. Thank you.
And I probably should have prefaced some of my remarks, too, by saying that this is a, the, there's a co-mingling of funds that happens in this County Service District for Roads. So we have revenues that we're moving, when we talk about revenues, into this, transfers from the North Bethany SDC and the TDT. So those monies are essentially received by the county, moved into this fund for expenditure on projects. And so the, as Sheila was saying, the actual revenue, the actual property tax revenues are estimated a little over $600,000 this year. A much larger portion of the funding that's being expended from this fund is actually those transfers in from TDT and system development charge.
But just to make sure, I'm sorry, just real quickly, the dollar and a quarter per thousand assessed value yields 12.7 million of revenues. That's what our top-line revenue...
So it's actually, it's actually about 600,000 in tax revenues this year is what we're estimating. And then the 12 million is total expenditures, which includes some of that property tax revenues, plus the transfers in from the...
Ah, yeah.
...system development charge and the TDT.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I see that. Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
And so if this is an okay time, we did have some questions that came up at the May 14th meeting, and we can sort of talk quickly through those. And then our committee chair, Mrs. Beechey, sent a couple of questions this afternoon, a couple of which I think are sort of related. So I think we can talk through a couple of those, if that's all right. So one of the questions was, how did the project costs that were identified in the original North Bethany Transportation Funding Strategy compare with the actual costs or some more current cost estimates? And then sort of, if I understood it right, I think it was kind of a general question about how are the actual revenues and expenditures tracking with that bigger strategy? So what we found is that the original project cost estimates totaled $69 million. We've gone back through and based on actual costs and some additional estimates for projects that haven't been completed yet, we're estimating about 72.2 million, so about a 4.6% increase over time. Our revenues and the expenditures to date are actually pretty consistent with our original expectations. So in terms of how the revenue's coming in and how it's being expended, we feel like we're on track with the original intent of the strategy. About half of the planned units have been permitted, and we have a little more than half of the anticipated revenue has been realized. So we feel like we're actually tracking pretty well. Another complication in this is that in the bigger funding strategy, those multiple funding sources are going to sort of peak at different times. So the MSTIP commitment was an upfront, one-time commitment, so that's done. The TDT and the system development charge revenues are at the time that building permits are issued, so that's going to have a, as the build-out occurs, that will be a source of revenue. But when the development's completed, that, those revenues will essentially dry up. And then the service district is an ongoing property tax levy, so that would continue to provide an ongoing stream of revenue as needed in order to complete the remaining projects at that point. So... And then with the monies that have been received and allocated to date, we have about 60% of the total linear footage of the anticipated road improvements has either been completed or we've allocated funding for it. So again, I think as we're thinking about how the revenues are coming, how we're spending it, and what we've achieved, I feel like we're very much on track with, with the original strategy.
The one thing that you hadn't mentioned, and maybe if you could just repeat again what we're talking about, because it's not a term I actually have heard very much in the past. You talk about trust and agency. What is that again?
Yeah.
And what's, and how's that funding tracking?
Sure. So trust and agency is if a developer's been required to construct some public road improvement, and for some reason...
As a condition of approval, or...
Correct. Yeah. So as a condition of approval for a development. And there's some, typically, it's some sort of a practical, logistical, physical constraint that precludes them from being able to construct that improvement. At the time that they build their other development improvements, we'll assess, estimate the value of that improvement, collect money from them at that time.
Okay. Got you.
And that goes into a separate fund where it's just basically held, and every deposit is tracked individually in terms of what the use is...
Okay.
...and where it needs to be expended. So we keep track of all of those. And then whenever we do a project or another developer next door does a project, and it becomes practicable to build that improvement, then the money is either expended by the county or given to the other developer to make the improvement.
And how is that tracking?
Um, we...
That must be, that'd be very challenging to track, I would think.
It generates a fair amount of paperwork, but we have, we have a system. We've been doing this for a very long time, so we have a good system for how to track those.
That's why Sheila is good at what she does.
Yes. Well, actually, excuse me, I didn't really mean tracking in the sense of like keeping the counting part. I'm just thinking more...
Oh, in terms of...
In terms of projections of what we might have put down as we thought would be...
Okay.
...in that, in that kind of funding mechanism and what's actually been put in it. Because you didn't mention that as one of the...
Got you. Yeah. So there were, it's a little bit complicated, but there were some pre-existing developments up in the area. Arbor Oaks is not technically a part of the North Bethany subarea, but it's completely surrounded by, or almost completely surrounded by North Bethany. So the developer there was making proportional contributions to a future intersection improvement at Springville 185th, which that project has now been completed, and those funds from that developer were used to help pay for that intersection improvement. So that was a unique circumstance where the developer didn't trigger the signal, but we wanted to capture sort of a fair share contribution from developer, from the developer as they were developing their project. And then those funds then again went to fund that future, or what has now been completed, the intersection improvement there.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I, if I could note, just for the recording, that Commissioner Rogers has joined us.
Okay. And let's see. So a couple of other questions that had come up, too, were, in our previous presentation, and Chuck, I think you can pull that map up for me? There were several projects that are, I think I can use a pointer on this, but there were some projects on Springville Road, three sort of circles or ovals there on the left side of the screen. And one of the questions was, was there any service district money going into those three projects? And the answer on that one is no. Those three projects are being funded either by the Urban Road Maintenance District, which is an interim sidewalk infill project, sort of on the, in the middle of Springville Road. And then the other two projects are being funded with a combination of MSTIP, TDT, and transportation SDC revenues.
Which, which all makes sense to me, given that the original Bethany area has existed for almost 30 years over its build-out.
Right. And, and I did mention earlier that original $10 million MSTIP commitment, that was used to help fund the improvements that are along 185th and the far western portion of Springville Road and at the intersection. And so this project is an extension of that, so it is still funded with a portion of that MSTIP revenue. And then Chair Beechey had posed a question, too, about a specific project, the Springville Road from Joss to Kaiser, the longer oval there on Springville Road. The original project list had that estimated at $3.6 million. We're currently estimating it at $6.8 million. So again, that's an example of a number of these projects are pricing out differently, but the overall net effect has actually been fairly balanced. So the original project estimates were pretty high-level planning estimates. As we get into each individual project, we refine the cost estimates. And then I think you'd had a question as well about service district revenues committed to that project. And the, the answer on that is about $820,000 of that 6.8 million is actual service district property tax revenues that are being expended in that project. And then there was a question as well about total revenues and expenditures. And so we talked a little bit about the big picture of all the various funding sources and how that's been going, but specifically to the service district, the total revenues that have been received in property taxes to date are about 2.1 million. We've allocated about 1.3 million, so there's a little less than $800,000 that remains currently unallocated. And that's part of what Sheila was mentioning, as far as that unallocated balance, 800, about 800,000 of that is made up of the service district revenues.
And how do we calculate how much is going into a project?
So it's really a project-by-project decision. So we'll look at the total amount of funding that's available, what revenues are available, from which, from the different sources. In the original project list, there's a eligibility list of which different funding sources a particular project may be eligible for. So as we get ready to start programming a specific project, we're going to look and see how much money we have or anticipate coming in, which funding sources is that particular project eligible for, and then we'll basically just draw on those revenues as needed to deliver the project.
Okay. So there's not a particular proportion...
No.
...per, per project or percentage?
Yeah. Just a, just a project-by-project decision. That's a great question. And then, quick question before we move on.
Yes, sir. So you mentioned that Segment Four, Springville, Joss to Kaiser, was calculating out, or pricing out higher than anticipated. So if I remember right, that was the project that we selected to sort of allocate our funding to when we met last November, the three-point-something million that we had available. So does that then become just a, you know, down payment towards that project? And then the remainder gets paid in a future budget year?
We're just doing the design.
Right. So what we, I'm going to try to use the pointer on this, and I apologize, it's on the screen behind some of you, but, so the, so we're, we actually, last November's recommendation was to allocate about $900,000 for the design of Springville Road from the end of this project over to the end of this project.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the Springville Phase, what we're calling Springville Phase Three, the far eastern end of it, was allocated in the prior budget year.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So then I have some follow-up questions, then, on the, kind of going back to the project list. I mean, I'm thinking, when I look through this, that I'm checking off the ones that have been done. And, you know, what we really have left to work with, I guess, is what I've, ultimately what my questions are kind of going towards today. Because obviously, you know, we know Kaiser is being built by Polygon. So, I mean, none of our funds are going towards that. So in my mind, I'm kind of checking that off of the list, as we don't need to allocate for it anymore. So I'm just kind of thinking what more money, you know, what really...
What additional needs are out there.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's why I keep going back to the project list and thinking it just maybe needs to, that spreadsheet needs to be updated and, I don't know, reconfigured or, you know, checked off. I like my checklist.
Yeah. So it was interesting, you posed this question at the last meeting, and I said, sure, no problem, we'll get you that information. It's, it's proved to be much more complicated. There's a variety of sort of complicating factors. The projects are actually being delivered in segments that aren't exactly consistent with what was in the original budget.
Right.
So it becomes very difficult to do apples-and-apples comparisons. And some sections are being built by development, and so they're actually less expensive. Some that are being developed by the county prove to be, end up being a little more expensive. So it proved to be a bit of a challenge. So that's why we really stepped back and just said, let's take a look at the big picture of how the overall cost estimates are going and how we're doing overall. I think that's a easier question to pose and to, to answer.
Come the fall, when there's another subcommittee meeting, I'm assuming that you'll have an updated project list to prioritize and review at that time?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So this is always our master list. We're always looking at this as our basis, as a starting point for how to allocate the funding. And because it's a dynamic situation, again, as developers are potentially going to build certain projects that we thought might have been public projects, we're sort of constantly re-adapting, I guess, to the present realities on the ground. And so that's why we have been meeting with the subcommittee. That's proven very helpful to us, just to make sure that we're checking in with you all and making sure that we're not getting too far afield of, you know, where we think is prudent for us to go with trying to deliver on this, on this project list.
Right. And as to what you're saying before, is, you know, different parts are being done...
Right.
...you know, on, without us.
Correct.
Which is nice. But like on Project Three, going back to the, was that Samuel? No, that's 160th, the PCC almost...
Yeah, 178th.
Yeah. The old PCC entrance to Joss. With our three, I think Dan was kind of referring to this, that we've got three little improvements going on there. But on our project list, we've got a whole 11, you know, that would cost over $11 million to improve that whole thing altogether.
Right. And, and, yeah, and that, and that's the other, one of the other complications that we came across is that there have been some interim improvements made in lieu of the full projects. And so some of those revenues have been expended now, and then the rest of the project will be completed at a future date. So that, again, complicates the, the initial answer to your question. But, yeah, so I think, to your point, Chair Harrington, we certainly can take a whack at trying to really update this in terms of looking at the actual completion of each of these various project segments before we get together in November.
Well, and for that, I would turn to Ms. Beechey and Mr. Reed, and also Commissioner Trees, and ask, does that make sense?
Yes. We appreciate that.
Not only does it make sense, it's, I think it's really important. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. For now. Let's see. Something else strikes me. Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. There's been a long, rich, I appreciate your questions because they're very good. There's been a long, rich history on this particular area. I think there was some expectations differences from the community. They were hoping for a number of projects and much sooner. There were three other commission districts who are not representing that area, and obviously were a little bit concerned about the backfilling of dollars. So there's been a real tug over the past on MSTIP money, as well as county money, that would maybe burden other districts on a development that was supposed to occur. There's also been a bunch of disagreement from the building community, as you know, about what their responsibility was, so much so that some have said, the county hasn't treated this fairly, that they said that they would backfill all of these projects with additional funds, which many of us disagreed with that statement. So I, that's a little bit of history, but what I'm really interested in, Stephen, at some points, and I think it'd be good for our board as well, is that I really don't think the expectations the community are going to be met in terms of speed, of project delivery. I don't think that there's enough money to do what they think needs to be done. And I like where you went. I think you had, I mean, you were peeling away the onion, as I call it, and getting down to the nub of the issue. It'd be interesting to see what the build-out costs are. And then you have to go to, you know, District One and District Three and District Four, who are not in that area, and say, how much are you willing? say, how much are you willing to commit of your MSTIP allocations to make things happen? And I think it's going to be very difficult, so, I know for me it would be, but I, I'd like to see that, and maybe the chair was getting at that as well in November, but, you know, what's it really going to cost, what's it really going to do? And I, unfair, you weren't there, it was a board decision, so it wasn't you, but it's an interesting problem. I'll stop.
If, if I could jump in, in this discussion, so as a new member of the board, right, I recognize that there has been this program that was developed and agreed to and put into place, and we're eight years at least into building it, and what I'm looking forward sometime before this time next year is understanding the, the current state of affairs with that project list, and where, what the estimate is, you know, with, what's the completion level, and then what's left to be done, and I've clearly heard the 20-year expectation, right, but what is a forecast, right, and a forecast is the best educated guess we can make with available information for completing the original project list, both in terms of cost and, and timeframe.
Right.
And, you know, eyes wide open, what's the situation, and go from there. Is that a reasonable request?
And Chuck, can you go back to that map slide that we had up earlier? Thank you there. So one of the things that we tried to do with the map here was to actually provide a little bit of a status update, and I apologize, this one doesn't have the legend on it, but the, where you see the, either the black circles, those meant projects where we anticipate development will be constructing those improvements in the next 18 to 24 months. The red squares are projects that have been either completed or allocated by the county or developers in some cases. So I, I think that was intended to help provide a bit of a visual representation of what the status is of that, and again, I think that's what kind of showed that we have made a lot of progress in a pretty short amount of time.
Yep.
So overall, it's a very good news story. It's been a little bit of a challenge, just, again, the situation's very dynamic, and that's why we do need to take a look every year, obviously, and think about how, how we're going to budget for that upcoming year.
Yep. I would also like to, I would also like to be involved, obviously District Two is my district, this is very important to me, and understanding what the, what the future looks like is, is our best guesses, the chair just mentioned, so I know that I need to get up to speed more.
Right. Yeah, and I should maybe mention, too, when we've had the budget subcommittee meetings, typically it's been the chair and the District Two Commissioner have been the two board members that are invited to those meetings, along with all of the citizen reps as well.
And I did attend one while I was-
As Commissioner-elect, yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any, any other questions from the committee? Do we have any public comment? I believe there are usually comment cards towards the back people can sign up for.
Sorry, there were some out in the table, in the hallway table? No one had signed up before the meeting started, but-
So has anyone in the audience signed up for public testimony?
Oh, they're right there? Okay, all right, I looked in multiple tables and confused them all, but at least we're being careful.
So, yeah, if you were here, if you're here and want to give public testimony, can you raise your hand? Okay, all right, just want to make sure we're covered. All right, all right, we'll move on. Yeah. Okay, do we have any motion to approve the budget for the North Bethany County Service District for Roads as proposed, and to approve levying the permanent property tax rate of 1.25?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes.
Eight to zero.
So now our next steps will be to go to the full county budget committee, full county budget on June 18th, approximately 10:00 AM. The County Service District for Roads, they'll have a more specified agenda out to the public soon. All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
I'd like, I'd like to take a quick minute and thank you all for your service in relationship to this project. It's, it's a difficult one, and I appreciate the time and the energy that you've all spent.
Thank you very much. It's where we live, we care.
Thank you very much.
So the next budget meeting that we have is scheduled for 6:30 with the ESPD and URM-D budget committees, so we can check and see where we are with-
So do you want us to just take a recess till 6:30?
We can take a recess and then-
Okay. Well, then we'll recess and reconvene in about 18 minutes.
The Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District Budget Meeting. Now welcomes an introduction, Bob Davis is-
I'm right here.
Right there.
Welcome back, everyone, to another budget committee meeting. We hope to get the budget this time approved and have public testimony and questions, if there are any. We wanted to start with introductions, so I'm Bob Davis with the County Administrative Office.
Good evening, Sheriff Pat Carrick.
And Sean Fisher.
Good evening, I'm Karen Boland.
Jerry Willett, County Commissioner, District Four.
I'm Anthony Mills, and I'm going to check my phone to make sure that it's turned off, so.
Catherine Harrington, Commission Chair.
I'm Leroy Bentley, Committee Member.
Pam Trees, Washington County Commissioner, District Two.
Daniel Hauser, ESPD, URM Committee Member.
Roger Rogers, District Three.
Donna Tyner, ESPD, URM-D Budget Committee Member.
Dick Scouton, representing the Loa, Beaverton, and Cooper Mountain area, District One.
Great, thank you. Are we ready for the sheriff?
Yes, sir. Okay. So we were moving right into the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District overview. This is just a once-over, the, kind of the historical landscape for the special district. Just going to keep on moving to, to the numbers. So really what we wanted to do with this slide was just to give some perspective as to the proportion of our patrol fund that is represented by the special district, the, which is almost uniquely patrol-based services provided to district residents. So District Patrol makes up, you know, about 57% of our entire patrol fund services, and that patrol, kind of orange part of the pie chart on the right, that entire patrol is about 42% of our entire budget. So District Patrol, a significant, meaningful portion of our budget and the services that we provide in the urban unincorporated area. This slide, you know, what I would just kind of reiterate here, our request for this next fiscal year represents an eight-point, or an 8% increase overall. From the personal services side, it includes a request of three additional full-time employees, so two are deputy positions, and that's triggered by population growth to maintain that 1.0 deputy ratio per thousand residents, and then the third FTE is just that senior criminal record specialist. It's been about 10 years since then we've caught them up at all with the, kind of the support that they provide, the district. I want to thank you for your good questions. Last time we were together, we went back and worked hard to get informative response back, and, and I just, that's hugely important for us, and it's going to help us inform how we, how we communicate with you next year as well, trying to anticipate a little bit better what those questions might be, and we'd love to entertain any additional that you have.
I don't have any additional questions, I just want to thank you so much for being so thorough in your response to my questions, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that has any questions for this section of the budget hearing? So we're being asked to consider the motion to approve the budget for the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District as proposed, and to approve levying an ESPD permanent property tax rate of .6365 dollars and the ESPD local option levy rate of .68 dollars per thousand. Do we have anybody?
Move approval?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, do we have any further discussion before we vote?
Okay. Can I ask one question, Anthony? Just out of curiosity, had nothing to do with the budget, but how much area of the URM do we, how much of the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, wrong, wrong here, are we losing to incorporation? And what does that do to driver costs? I don't, I haven't tracked it recently.
It's de minimis.
Yeah, I thought it was, it's pretty much slowed at this point, hasn't-
Right, the annexation that's happening is in undeveloped areas, and then being developed by the cities.
So it's not costing, okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? So the next part is the Urban Road Maintenance District, and Todd Watkins will give us a presentation.
Hey, great. So I'm Todd Watkins, I'm the manager for the county's Road and Bridge Operations Division, and I am happy to join you tonight to talk about roads in the urban unincorporated area. So the Urban Road Maintenance District serves about 260,000 people in the urban unincorporated area, and if it were a city, it'd be the second most populous city in the state, second only behind Portland. I'm proud to say that with a pavement condition in the low 80s, out of a total score of 100, the district has some of the best roads in the state, and if you've driven around the state, I think you would agree with that. You know, we at LUT strive to maintain that quality day in and day out, and it's really because of dedicated funding that comes from URM that allows us to accomplish that goal. Little bit of history, in 1987, URM was formed exclusively for road maintenance, and it wasn't funded, though, until 1994, when the work really began in earnest. Back then, the road conditions were not that stellar, and the goal in those early days was to pave, pave, and pave some more. There wasn't much money to do anything else, and that was the focus at that time. However, as road conditions improved and the funding stabilized, the district's program and the authorization expanded twice, and that, we now include traffic calming, and that came about in 2001, and then in 2011, the program was expanded to include the bicycle and pedestrian improvement program. Although the district does do more now than those early days, road maintenance certainly is its heart and soul. So if I can get, oh, is this, there it is, all right. So for the upcoming fiscal year, we have four major initiatives. We have our paving program, and we alternate year to year between our overlay program and our soy-soil program. We are in a paving program year, and so we'll be paving just shy of seven miles of road. We also will continue to have a strong bike and pedestrian improvement program, and our Community Advisory Committee, URM-DAC, they are working diligently on a two-year cycle to select projects for that program, and we are currently in a project selection year, and the committee is hard at work sifting through an extensive list of candidates, and in fact, we'll be launching our public outreach efforts the day after tomorrow. The third program there is our ADA program. ADA stands for Americans with Disability Act, and we will be restarting our efforts to retrofit or replace curb ramps, generally triggered as a result of work that we're doing in the roadway when it comes to overlays and surface treatments. And lastly is our asset management efforts. We have a very aggressive asset management program within our pavement management program. We do visual inspections of our roads once every four years, so where 25% of the system gets inspected visually every year, and we use that data, that data to maintain a very detailed and thorough catalog of our roads so that we can have a very strong and robust pavement management system, so we can make good decisions about which roads to take care of, and that's evidenced by the quality of the roads. So to accomplish all these tasks, we need some money, and we're requesting just over $7.3 million this year. 1.1 million will go towards that paving program that I talked about. 3.47 is intended to go towards our bicycle and pedestrian improvement program, and then 2.75 million will go towards the remaining programs such as the Neighborhood Streets Program, that's what the NSP is, service requests, which is when people call in for service for particular issues in their neighborhood, ADA, and then just other support activities that, that we do to, to run the program. And that in a nutshell is the URM program, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the committee?
So you measure your surface treatments in miles, seven miles? Do you measure your pedestrian and biking improvements? I mean, how much are you going to do in that area?
Right, so those are generally done by linear feet. We have sidewalk improvement projects that we're doing, and usually those are connections, so those are generally done by the linear foot. Oh, I'll have to get back to you on the actual details on that. Oh, well, that's design, construction, and, and engineering, so I'll, I can get that number for you, just so you have.
Any other questions?
Sidewalks are expensive.
I bet they are. With curbs and-
And actually, these turn into more like drainage projects and sidewalks. And actually, these turn into more like drainage projects and sidewalk projects when you really start to build these things out, so there's a lot that goes into them that you don't see.
I had a question, Todd, on that. You prioritize your sidewalk construction with a weighted, I guess a weighted cost for schools that don't have sidewalks within a certain distance to the schools?
Yeah, we actually have a very comprehensive, and the committee, our advisory committee has done a phenomenal job of developing a very comprehensive evaluation process with criteria that includes safety, connectivity, social equity, and costs are involved with that as well. So, it's a very complex way of looking at those so that we can really target those areas that need it, and yeah, it's a very thorough evaluation.
Todd, I had a question.
You might get some help from the school district because they don't have to put buses in there once you put the sidewalk in, right? In a lot of cases.
In some cases, yeah.
Todd, when we, a few years back, when we saw that the program was successful, and we started allocating money to sidewalks and other things other than surface pavement for roads, we connected with the school districts a lot, and you probably recall that we even sent questionnaires and said, what would be safer routes to schools, and then we put in some state money, came through the county as well. Is that still functioning that way for 1920? Are you still looking at safer routes to schools and gauging the school districts?
We are. We look to partners for a variety of opportunities to try to leverage that, gain share opportunities, safer routes to school. Also, if there's major street projects that we might be able to dovetail into, so anytime we can take advantage of those existing opportunities, we definitely will because our money does go farther for that.
And you're still imagining, at previous board, we took $2 million a year from the gain share, and we were trying to match with some ERM money as well. Is that still going?
Correct, yes, we are still working together for that effort.
Great.
Do you still have a safe routes to school person that's on the, on ERMDAC?
We, well, we have, the county has a bike compassion coordinator, and so that person does work with us closely.
But while I was on it, there was somebody who, I think, wasn't the coordinator of that, happened to be a citizen member?
I don't recall exactly, Anthony, but we do have that connection, though.
I can speak for the Beaverton School Board, since I serve on that too, that we do have a safe routes to school person as well, that they work with.
And I would just add that, full disclosure, I'm ERMDAC's, the advisory committee for ERM's board chair, or advisory committee chair. I tried to promote myself there, sorry. And one of the things that we're very thoughtful about is what is the impact of this on the highest need areas, right, as well as the highest need populations? And we did in the past have someone who was engaged, who had a really close connection with safer routes to schools, and I think we would certainly welcome the participation of anyone from Beaverton School District to help us better inform which projects are most valuable to select.
Yes, and we've had people from the BSD, Beaverton School District, to attended as guests to advocate for particular projects or particular initiatives, so there is that relationship there. And the meetings will open anybody, and we encourage people to come in and participate.
So, I just want to try and make sure it's clear, for safe routes to school, there's two parts of it. There's the hard costs of making sure that there aren't gaps in sidewalks and crosswalks, and then there are the soft costs in terms of the actual program of doing the behavioral work with the students and the parents so that they know what the route is. And the school districts have been particularly helpful in making sure and working with like regional and state programs to make sure that the soft costs are covered, whereas the county's been focusing primarily on the hard costs, because you can't walk on a sidewalk that doesn't exist. So, it's all working together.
Any other members of the committee that have questions or comments? Okay, is there anybody in the public that has any questions or comments that they'd like to bring forward? Okay, without seeing any. We have a motion to approve the budget for the urban roads maintenance district as proposed, and to approve levying the permanent property tax rate of .2456 dollars.
It's been moved.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? It's 10 to 0. So, then we have some next steps. So, the next steps are, June 18, 2019, the board to convene a public hearing at 10:00 AM to consider the budget adoption. Location will be here in the Charles D. Cameron Public Services Auditorium, and public testimony is welcome at that time. Thank you very much for everybody's service tonight, and we're excused.
1:45, so, you know, we could go through the presentation and then take a recess before the. Oh, there you go. We need our budget committee members as well. So, what time did we ask them to be here? 7:30, okay? Oh, that's right, it's advertised right in front of me. Okay, we'll adjourn and take a recess until 7:30.
See you next year.
Trying to catch up with some of my email here.
Okay, Bob?
Well, you can see, I get a. Meeting of the Budget Committee, and at this stage, we want to have introductions to begin. I'm Bob Davis with the County Administrative Office.
Don Boone, County Administrative Office.
Jack Kleon, Support Services Venice.
Mark Bauer, Budget Committee.
Jerry Willey, County Commissioner, District 4.
K S Venkata Raman, President of Hillsborough.
Catherine Harrington, Chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners.
Lee Roy Bentley, Budget Committee Chair.
Pam Treese, District 2.
Roger, District 3.
Dick Scowton, District 1, L.O. at Beaverton Cooper Mountain.
Good afternoon, I should say. Seems like it should be afternoon. I'm going to just do a quick presentation on the budget. Mark asked me to give the entire, sorry, committee mini-bauer, asked me to give the entire presentation at the last, that I did at the last meeting, but I won't do that, so we'll keep it short, since we spent a lot of time talking about the budget. I want to start off just by going over the county mission statement. I did this on May 14th, but the county mission is to provide excellent and cost-effective services that support healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities, and encourage meaningful participation in community activities and county governance. The reason why we always talk about the county mission is that this budget is really about the county mission. It's about making sure that the community stays safe, sustainable, prosperous, and we have over 2,000 completely committed and dedicated county employees who carry out this mission every day, and with who we wouldn't be successful doing that without. So, I want to thank them, those that are here, for your work every day and your commitment. It is so appreciated, so thank you very much. As you know, the county budget is really framed by the strategic plan, and so the strategic plan does a few things. One, it talks about countywide services, and it talks about municipal services. And countywide services are those traditional county services that are paid by countywide taxpayers and by revenues, and then municipal services are typically paid for, by those who are actually receiving these services. General fund is our discretionary part of our budget, and as you look at the budget, it's the smallest part of the budget, and the largest part is the special funds, which are the restricted funds. We also have a resource allocation strategy with priorities that are established by the Board of Commissioners. Historically, we have prioritized public safety, transportation, health and human services, and of course, we're prioritizing affordable housing, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and a lot of other projects which you will learn about as you look at the budget. We want to have balanced systems. One example is the public safety system. We have a complex system that requires it to be in balance for both efficiency sake but also effectiveness, and so when you look at the number of deputies that are on the road, we need to have a certain number of community corrections, officers, a certain number of judges, a certain number of prosecutors, and so maintaining balance is important because as soon as you get inefficient, then it costs more money to run the system. And then the other is, we provide services in really three different ways. We provide direct services, we partner with others, and then we support other people's priorities and agendas. And we do that with our community partners, with our community government partners. So, when you look at the total county budget, it is $1.4 billion, and that is a growth of $121 million from the previous year. I do want to put that $121 million into some context, if I could, because there are a couple of expenses that represent the bulk of that growth. The first is affordable housing. There's $48.5 million in additional money for affordable housing. That includes the metro bond that has 45.5 million, and then additional 3 million from the county general fund, and then PERS is $24 million, and that is including $15 million for a PERS site account, and then $9 million in additional PERS rate increase. So, if you just add those two, that represents 5.6% of the increase, so it's $72.5 million. So, just looks like a really big number, but there are certain expenditures that can really represent large parts of that increase. FTE growth is at about 4%, which is not out of the range of what you would expect, given the growth in the community and the service demands that are being placed on the county. So, moving to the discretionary part of the budget, which is the part that the Board of Commissioners has decision authority over and can spend it on the priorities. The general fund is growing at about $37 million, which is about 13%. And again, if you look at a few cost factors, which includes PERS, COLA, medical costs, and the increase for affordable housing, 8% of that 13% is for those four expenditure items, and that, again, it was PERS, COLA, cost of living, adjustment for our staff, medical costs, and the additional general fund money for housing. So, that means the rest of the growth is about 5%, and that includes all the base costs, I mean, some additional base costs. So, the general fund, FTE, is growing at about 37 staff, which is about 3%. So, that is my presentation in a nutshell. Is there any questions about that? I will turn it over to Sheriff Bentley.
Thanks, Don. We're just slightly ahead of schedule, but I think we can go ahead. I see we have a community organization here who would like to provide some testimony, so if they're ready to do that, the Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Center. Mr. Munoz, is he here? All right, well, we'll, 7:45 would be the time, but I thought, well, if he's here, we can do it. Is there any other community organizations that have wanted to provide some testimony here? The way this will work after the testimony is provided is that we're going to go through this process of looking at each of the functional areas of the county, and allow you to chance to ask questions, and Sheriff Garrett does have some answers to some previous questions that were up, so he's going to provide that information. And then we will, at the proper time, vote to have a motion hopefully will pass, and we'll vote to approve this budget, and then it will go on to the county board to be adopted on the 18th.
Gil's walking in the door as we speak.
Just in time delivery, right?
While I was stalling, I was stalling as long as I could here. I was singing that Gil.
We're ready for you. Come on up to the table.
You're early, and we're going to go ahead and put you on when you are ready. No, you're early, we're early, and you're on time, so.
Okay. Well, good evening. Good evening, for the record, Gil Munoz, CEO of Virginia Garcia Health Center, and I want to speak to you this evening about school-based health centers. First, a short story. So, I want to tell you about a 16-year-old who had an active DHS case for parent neglect. She established care at one of our school-based health centers. She struggled with stable housing, the ability to attend school, mood issues from her situation, and was developing problems with alcohol and cannabis. She began to regularly visit the school-based health center, mental health therapist, and took advantage of primary care services as well. Once she recognized that she was empowered to make her own choices about her health care, she chose to stick with our services and the school-based health center team, stuck by her side through her teenage years. The school-based health center team worked diligently to help this teen navigate her life's choices, helping her connect to PCC along the way, and supported her ability to invest in herself by investing in the health, in her health from a holistic perspective. She has become a stable young adult with a good job and her own health care benefits. She still stops by to keep the school-based health center team up to date on her life. So, some statistics, in the last year. So, some statistics, in the last year, we served over 3,407 kids with primary care services at our school-based health centers, 632 kids with mental health services, 277 kids with dental services, and 2,700 kids who received dental sealants and assessments at their local schools, plus 950 kids at Head Start programs. We have five active student health advisory committees serving their peers in four Washington County school districts. So, over 12 years ago, we were invited by Washington County, the School District's Commission on Children and Families, to embark on the operations of school-based health centers. Our first school-based health center was in 2007 at the Tigard High School. So, the school-based health center model financially in, in Washington County is that there's a pass-through grant of about $50,000, and the rest of the dollars that are required to support the school-based health center really come from program income. So, it costs about $300,000 a year for each one of the school-based health centers. So, the difference between the 50,000 that we receive through the grant is required to be made up by program income, which, the school-based health center is a challenging model because it doesn't have the same kind of rhythm as you do in a normal primary care practice. It's more of a preventative nature. We are there, available for the students when they have an issue, when they're referred from the faculty at, at the school. So, just over the, the last three years, we've incurred about half a million dollars loss, you know, in operations of the school-based health centers. And we have to take a very hard look at what can be done for the sustainability of the programs. We look at other regions where there are robust school-based health centers, Multnomah County, King County, Jackson County, and they all receive a significant amount of local support to, to maintain their viability. So, that's why I'm here this evening. We believe in school-based health centers. We want to continue providing that important care for the health of our youth, but is why we have come to the, to the Board with a request of a $50,000 request per school-based health center for annual operating support so we can maintain the viability of these, these access points for the health of our youth. So, thank you, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
How many schools I know? Tigard, Beaverton, Forest Grove?
We have six in, in total, five in Washington County. So, Beaverton, Tigard, Centennial in Hillsborough, Forest Grove, and Twalton. Yes.
Thank you for your testimony. Could you, could you repeat your request one more time for me, please?
Yeah, so the, so the request is really a $50,000 support per school-based health center to, to supplement the grant support that we receive.
Thank you. So, an additional $250,000 total?
Correct.
Are there any other questions from the committee, from the Board? Any questions in the audience for Mr. Gil? Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Hey, thank you to the Board, and thank you for the, the long-term partnership with Virginia Garcia and the School Districts for this program.
Are there any other community-based organizations that would like to provide some testimony or comment? All right, hearing none, we will move on to.
Quick question. Is now also the time for asking for individual testimony as well? So not restricted to community-based organizations?
Excuse me, Chair. If we were going to take a public testimony during every, every functional area.
Ah, okay.
That, that we go through.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, beginning in the functional areas, the first functional area, general government. Do we have any questions or comments from the committee regarding general government? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public safety and justice. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Sheriff Garrett has some answers to some questions that were previously brought forward, so he wants to provide those answers.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we did receive questions late this afternoon, and I want to begin by saying that I share the overarching concerns that are expressed by these, by these questions. Our leadership shares the overarching concerns. And if we were to take the first, the first question, which is really about jail services technicians, this budget supports an increase of 4.25 of those positions. There are several narrow circumstances where a deputy will work that position for a jail services technician because, we call them JSTs, are not available. One such example is our release office. We used to have a deputy and a JST work in that release office together. And when it gets busy, they're both extremely busy, we, we peeled away and reassigned that JST to other areas where they were needed more. So as a result, now when it gets busy, there are two deputies who work release when there used to be one and a JST. So additional JST positions will help defray that requirement to have two deputies work a position rather than one. Another example would be our segregation housing unit control center. A JST is assigned there full-time, the deputy is out on the floor in that unit. And when a JST is not available, they're backfilled by a deputy. Now, many times when that happens, and it's not frequent, a deputy who is on limited duty or light duty or ill, but able, able to work in a limited capacity, will work that pod, that, that, that control center. But it's two deputies as opposed to a deputy and JST. Similar circumstances with the lobby. Question number one makes an excellent point because the JST ads that we requested is about mitigating jail services technician overtime. That's really the, the, the underlying reason for the request. This fiscal year, we're on, which is almost wrapped up, we're on track to have about the highest cost of overtime in the jail in modern history, going back at least 10 years. And that's a combination of deputy overtime and JST overtime. We have about 40 jail services technician positions. They're overtime, this current fiscal year is closing in at about $214,000, which for them is high. So this is going to help reduce that overtime pressure on that position. And stop me anytime you have questions. Question number two is about, basically, too much reliance on overtime in the jail, which I said we share that concern, and what are we doing about it? The most important thing that's happened in the past couple of years is that the Board of Commissioners has authorized additional deputy and JST positions so that we can be authorized to add staff and relieve some of the, some of the overtime. In the past two years, thanks to the support from the Board of Commissioners, we've had 19 positions added, which includes this current fiscal year, which is about to start. The vast majority of those positions, nine additional deputy positions and six additional jail services technicians are focused to relieve that overtime pressure. Now, we started this request, this budget request, with asking for 10 additional deputy positions, and the county administrator's office said, well, hold on, Sheriff, you haven't filled the vacancies, the vacancies for the positions we've previously authorized you. Great point. And we couldn't agree more. We really need to fill those positions first, measure what kind of overtime that we're seeing, and then come to the Board, your committee, if we still have a need for additional You know, one other thing that we're doing is that we did, thanks to your support, acquire a risk management analyst that can, that can help us assess and mitigate work-life balance, you know, get chiropractor services, whatever we can do to keep deputies on the line more consistently. Really excited about the potential there. The county has undertaken a employer of choice conversation that's involved the Board of Commissioners. Really, that's, we're, we're hopeful that that's timely, it's meaningful, it's going to put us more on par with some of our area competitors. We've had 15 jail deputies resign in the past 15 months, right? So about one, one a month. And some of them have gone to a competitive sheriff's office because of the benefits are just a little bit outpacing us, and cost of living's not as high as it is here. But I know that that's being worked on, and, and that work is sincere, and we support that work wholeheartedly. The reality is we haven't been staffed fully in the jail for over two years. Much of our discussion is about our contract. I won't give away details, but it's focused on health and welfare, and it's focused on mitigating overtime. We've turned positions that provided administrative support in the office back into the jail. We assigned some patrol deputies to work court security so we could return those positions back into the jail. Won't do that forever because the jail needs to work court security. It's a rare special assignment, but for now, we're focusing on getting deputies back in the jail. The variable hour employees, which you have helped us realize, have taken what would be overtime off of jail deputies and put them on temp, temp staff. So we are, we are making an effort, and we're seeing gains. It's just not as fast as anybody would like, like it to be. Question number three about the public safety training center, the reality is, it's a state-of-the-art training center that's going to help us recruit. If it helps us recruit and fill vacancies, it's going to lower overtime. It comes with some trainers, thanks to your support. So instead of pulling a jail deputy off the line, right, and backfilling with overtime to train his or her peers, well, we have four training positions that we can staff there full-time, and so we're not having to backfill collateral instructor duties. And better training equals fewer accidents and a more healthy workforce. Finally, with regard to our fleet, we, we have assigned cars to our enforcement sergeants and them only. There's an operational need that get called out more than, than line deputies do. We have not initiated a take-home car program for deputies because we've got other priorities. I mean, I would love to do that, it'd be a great retention and recruitment tool. We've begun discussions on that, but we have other priorities to meet. So hopefully that answers, again, legitimate concerns. We share these concerns, and, but love to take your questions.
I have a question, Sheriff. Is that, is the overtime scheduled overtime? Is it, is it optional or mandatory, or how do you?
A significant amount, it varies, it peaks and valleys, is mandatory, meaning we're telling a deputy, you can't go home at the end of your shift, or we're calling them at home and asking them to come in four hours early to work half of the previous shift. And it's mostly sick calls. I mean, that's really, that's really mostly what it is, 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 is sick calls and on a shift that has really very little additional staff that are trained. Remember, when we hire a deputy, it takes a year to train him or her, and we have a resignation a month. We're constantly, you know, hiring, we're not able to fill all of our positions today, and then it takes a year to train somebody, so it's a challenge.
I have a follow-up question. Do you have any indication that the forced overtime is affecting absenteeism?
I do. I do. And when you add that with the, there's no longer an incentive for tier-two an officer to keep their sick hours, and, and Oregon's, Oregon's law, which, your first 40 hours of sick leave is completely protected, that's just free time. I, I'm convinced that people need a break, and sometimes that's the only way that they're getting a break.
Are there any other questions for Sheriff Garrett? From the committee, from the public? Have a question.
Come up to the table, give us your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Red Wortham, and I appreciate the attention to the written questions that were sent in since I wasn't sure I would make it. I would also like to ask, is there any consideration, rather than adding two jail sergeants at this time, which in reality will mean that you promote from the jail deputy pool, then leaving two more vacancies that, as you mentioned, we would not be able to fill if we're unable to fill those things? Is there any consideration to, instead of promoting those now, not utilizing additional sergeants for outside things such as the recruitment team from the jail division at this time, or having civilians do some of those things up in recruitment rather than a paid sergeant, so that we can keep those deputies on the line at this time? Because I feel if we take two more of those positions in order to reduce span of control, which I myself know is important, but I think that it's less important right now than the, the absolute loss of deputy line-level staff that we're experiencing at this time.
Yeah, we're absolutely open-minded to all of those, of those suggestions. I mean, if it returns people to the line or adds our line staff, I mean, we're absolutely open to it. And, and if, if it's going to help, then we're absolutely going to do it.
Okay. Because my concern at this point is as we add a chief deputy, and we add two more sergeants, and we add two more, which are not necessarily unnecessary things in the long-term picture, that all of that gets pulled up from the bottom, and if we're having a retention, or excuse me, if we're having a recruitment problem and a retention, retention problem, then how do we fill those bottom-level things as we're top-filling? And, and that's a huge concern, because if we're losing one a month now, what are we going to lose when that mandatory overtime is, is more than 20 hours a week, as it is now?
Yeah.
That's my concern.
No, thank you for that. That's, that's valid.
That was my only other question.
Thank, thank you. Are there any other questions for Sheriff Garrett? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, moving on to the next functional area is land use and transportation. Do we have any questions from the committee? Comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to housing, health, and human services. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, move on to culture, education, and recreation. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we move on to non-departmental. Any questions or comments from the committee? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Moving on to facilities, technology, capital. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from the public? Moving on for transportation capital. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from the public? Non-operating functional area. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the total county-wide budget as proposed, and approve levying the following property taxes. The county's permanent property tax rate of $2.2484, public safety option, local option levy tax of .42, library local option levy tax rate of .22, and a general obligation bond amount of $4,693,916. I have a motion.
We have approval.
I have a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing. Next steps, this budget will be presented to the board for consideration and adoption on June 18 to 10 a.m. in this room. So, if anybody's interested, and public testimony can be made at that time. Any other questions or comments? Then I'll consider this meeting adjourned.
We'll move on to SDL.
Service District.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Meeting's not adjourned. We got one more. Thank you. Didn't turn the page here.
Okay, we're with you.
All right.
Got your back.
Service District for lighting. We have a presentation from Service District for lighting.
Thank you, everyone, for developing a great budget. Have a good evening as you leave the room.
Sorry about that.
That's quite all right.
You thought you were going to get off light and get out.
Good evening again. Sheila Jambroni, Administrative Manager from Land Use and Transportation, to present the Service District for Lighting budget. The Service District for Lighting, standard service districts are created primarily through development and provide independent lighting and rates for tax loss in each of the assessment areas. Almost 100% of those are within the urban growth boundary. We have a small segment, six actually, in the rural areas. There are 1,222 assessment areas, and with that, we have 12,379 street lights. I think at the last budget meeting, someone asked what the differentiation was between Option A and Option B. Option A being the PGE-owned and maintained, and there are 7,754 Option A lights in the district. Option B lights, which is the county-owned PGE-maintained lighting, there are 4,725 lights in Option Bs. To save electricity costs, PGE has been in the process of switching out the older lights within the system. The high-pressure sodium is kind of the standard, and essentially, we have still 8,000. Of those 12,379, we have 8,000 to transition to LEDs at this time. Even though all of our new service areas are LED as a standard, but currently, only 35% of the SDLs are LEDs. That transitions to, as I've noted, a few of the dark-sky-friendly and the energy cost savings there, transitions to our budget, which is on the next page. Our revenues this year go up approximately 11%. The increase is due to the addition of the assessment areas as development continues. But noticeably, our materials and supplies, which is our utilities primarily, we don't expect that to increase. The LED, adding the LEDs is kind of offsetting that electricity increase, as well as the fact that, at this time, PGE doesn't anticipate a rate increase for us. Just to break it down a little bit more, the inter-fund expenditures, those are the staff costs and some indirect costs to help support and run the actual SDL program itself. And then the transfer to other funds, as you saw in our North Bethany, each of our funds within LUT pays a little bit for the Office of the Director of Administrative Services staff, and that's what that is. And then finally, we do have a contingency in this fund. Since we use the property tax statement as our billing mechanism, we need a little bit of cash flow between July 1 and that November, when the money typically comes in. So, that's what we use that for. And that's all I had for the SDL budget.
All right, Sheila, do you have a target level for your contingency fund?
We stay right at the four-and-a-half to five months, and again, we try, you know, we're not in it to be over that. We do have to anticipate a little bit for end-of-life costs and those types of things that we don't necessarily know going into the budgets. We're trying to keep it right at that, right under $1 million seems to be the best target that's working for us.
Thank you.
Can I ask one last question? Do you have an, might I ask a question? Do you have an estimate, you've got about, you said about 8,000 more lights to switch over to LEDs. Do you have an expected timeframe that, at the current rate of replacement, it might take X number of years?
Interesting that you'll say that, or ask that question. So, we'll be coming back to the Board of Commissioners towards the end of June. PGE has approached us and would like to kind of accelerate that. They've got some money in their budget. They'd like to accelerate that program. They feel they can get through the preponderance of those, I wouldn't say in the next year, but the next two years.
Great. Thank you. Be good to learn more. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Any questions from the public on this? Okay, I'll have, entertain a motion to approve the SDL budget as proposed.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, eight to nothing. Thank you, Sheila.
Chair, before we adjourn, I just want to highlight that I've seen in our audience one of the graduates from our Civic Academy, and so I just want to thank you very much for sitting through our various budget committee meetings to learn more about how the work is done. Thank you.
Again, the next step for the budget for adoption for this SDL will be on June 18 at 10 a.m. by the Board of Commissioners. The testimony will be welcome at that time. Are there any other business for the committee?
Just to thank you all again for all the time and effort you put into making this a successful process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Now, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Leroy.